Okay.
I got it in my car. I should have been there. I saw you walking away.
I shouldn't have run to all having.
You guys ready? All right. Welcome to, no, you're fine. Welcome to the July fifteenth. Western Weaver County Planning Commission meeting. Um, let's see, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to do it through the time of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which this stands. One nation and the God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. See, it looks like we have. Everyone tonight, um, we do have a new commissioner. But she's going to join us next month, it sounds like, right? Okay. Very good. So pledge roll call minutes. Did anybody have any issue with the April twenty second, May six minutes? I didn't see anything that was wrong with it, so. By virtue of the fact, there's no comment on those, we'll just go ahead and say those are approved. Then, uh, let's see, next item or only item we have on our agenda tonight is, uh, the. Item two point two, the Bennett Master Plan Development. I think that's what you're here for.
It's thought that you'd be done with this by now, huh?
Yeah.
It's bad.
It's not back in a bad way, though.
No, it's, so the county commissioners were looking over it. Um, I think they're almost ready to make a decision, but some of the adjustments they made, they just wanted to get your guys' opinion. Um, so my plan is to kind of talk you through just a couple of the items here and then, um. Capture, uh, capture all of the differences in a, in his email and just send those to you. And you guys can look through them individually and see if they have issues. But really, that's the really inconsequential, um, changes. Me. Brass there, hang on one second. Yeah, you guys tell me what's consequential or not. We've kind of made a couple of adjustments just internally between different members of staff. And the, uh, the applicant. Thought I'd be a little more prepared, okay? So as far as the pedestrian bridges over the river go, um, we've discussed that with the applicant and basically said. Uh, they've agreed to put the man as long as they can get an impact fee credit for those two bridges, which I figure, uh, we'll give them a credit until they're paid back and then. Um, the rest of the impact fees would just go towards other system improvements. Um, that would be needed. Any concerns over any of that impact fee credits or anything like that? I know that how it left the planning commission was you guys figure out how to fund it. And so we've, we figured that part out, but.
So what type of impact fees were?
So trail impact fees.
Old trail impact fees would first go to the, um. Those orders to the pedestrian purchase.
Yeah. So basically when somebody pulls a building permit, um, the trail impact fee that they pay, um, will either be reimbursed to, uh, master developer. Um, or if it's master developer applying, it could be just a credit where they don't have to pay that trip impact fee. Um, but regardless, uh, at the end of the year, there's going to be a certain amount of trail impact fees that we are, that we've earned through this project. Um, if that's how we did it, we just write a check to the developer at the end of every year, however that works.
Okay, so they'll still have to put in all the trails?
Trails and bridges, uh, this is specifically about the two bridges, though. So yeah, all the trails will still go in, no impact fee adjustment for the trails. It's just once those bridges are paid for, um, through the impact fee credit, then. Everything else, just the impact fee just accrues as well.
So the credit can only be what's accrued from their development. They can't, it's only a credit for there. So if someone else has a trial impact fee, they're not eligible to receive that from anything outside of their development.
Not just their project.
Then I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Make sure that's not happening.
Okay, so there was one section that we were trying to settle up on, um, it's regarding the, um, code sections, the county code sections that aren't applicable because the development agreement standards are prevailing. Um, and the applicant's just gone through, uh, the list of items specifically in title one oh eight, title one oh eight is our standards section or chapter, I mean. Um, and, uh, they've gone through and just weeded out the things that they think their, uh, document and their standards already applied, uh, better standards to than our code does. Um, I don't, I really don't think there's a whole lot of detail in here that you guys are going to frown about, but, um. You'll have the chance to look at that and in the email, I'll give you the page number of that. Any questions before I move on from that? A whole lot of context for you. Okay. See, okay, there were a couple of other things that Commissioner Harvey wanted specifically, um. Commissioner Harvey really liked the way that, um, Norton Commons was surrounded by a twenty to thirty foot open space belt all the way around. Um, and he wants to try and see if we can emulate that on forty seven hundred west. He was, I think he's a little bit, um. Maybe a little bit misinformed on how the general plan wants to treat forty seven hundred as kind of a Main Street style. And so, um, I've, we've taken his, uh, recommendation and added in everywhere where the. Uh, plan doesn't say treat this like a Main Street, let's put some green space buffer in there. So basically. That will be everywhere where we've got houses that abut forty seven hundred from the rear. And so he's saying, just give us a good felt, uh, around that, which I don't think is a bad idea. Um, the only unfortunate part about that is I don't think most of that the developer owns. So I think Commissioner Harvey's trying to capture that in case other parcels. Go into the developers', um, ownership. So any questions about that?
Well, concern more than question, that wasn't the intent in the general plan. And depending on. What happens, how much property the this development's able to get that's up next to forty seven hundred, that could be a patchwork mess. And that's really concerning to me. I don't, I don't necessarily want to see that because that's not what we had in the general plan and I'm not sure what the goal to get it that way is, other than that's what he's seen. And he feels like that preserves something rural in that area. And but that's not what, again, that's not what's in the general plan and the general plan was accepted by the public.
Yeah.
The way that it's, you know, the way that the form base has stated it. So, and that's putting buildings right up to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And so I, I'd have to say that that concerned me. I don't necessarily want to see that happen.
Yeah, I'll just say, did it to all that? That's exactly my sentiment that Andrew said, um, additionally, I just a lead path every once in a while, like. Visually, I, I don't see that, or even if it's developed, why would, I don't see that being valuable open space. I see that being a waste of land, honestly.
If you were developing a great big ranch and you wanted to maintain the ranch look like it's always been, and it's had that in the past. Maybe that's suitable. I don't see that as being suitable for what we're trying to accomplish there.
Well, there's a little bit of difference in climate in Kentucky versus here and there, you're not going to need. A sprinkler system and things like that and, um, they got a moisture out there and they keep it green.
Sure.
And out here, we just keep it nice and weed.
We need to gravel and.
Yeah. Charlie's saying we can use our open space.
Um, they didn't specify one way or the other, but I, I think it would be, uh, because the way that they define open space in the development agreement would, would include that. Which that just means that you, that eats into your open space a little bit.
That's wasted open space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Harvey can call me and I'll talk to him about it.
But.
I think that's. Misenvisioned.
I'm putting a note on the side that says, call Sarah.
I'll walk you through. I don't like it.
I gave.
Call Andrew. I like what he said.
Sarah hates.
Yeah. I'll text him now. We're getting one of them. So, well. Does anybody mind if we take a comment from the applicant?
I just, I, you know, being in those meetings and being out there with. I think the intent is it's a, it was a beautiful entry into it. And I, my take is. There's a lot of development that doesn't have that, you know, up against the road, there's not somewhat beautiful entrance. And that's my understanding and, and he's placing what he saw as the thing that needs to be done. And I think part of what we were. Trying to articulate is let the guy that actually made that entrance do the job of this.
Yeah.
But, you know, the language we put in there, we hope to say, okay, this is. Suffices what the concern is. With some, with some ability to go to the find your own to ratchet that down and show that there's something benefit. To the design. So I don't know, I mean, you know. Obviously, if you guys feel like to push back on that, we're, we're kind of agnostic. So like, it's going to be, it's going to look really great. We don't want to impose a buffer. To try to create something nice as we saw it, it's already inherent. So that's the intent, I think, we go through the design, but we also don't want it to get sticky point. On a decision, I'm afraid it's really not that big.
I think my intent is to make it so that you can design it the way you want to go along with your development. And, and in taking another vision on it, we won't, we won't even get a good hybrid. And, and ultimately, if you're not able to acquire all the property up to forty seven hundred, it's going to be, it's going to have a different look between all of those properties anyway.
Yeah.
So I just assumed, keep the standard. If they're, if you can call it that, what the general plan already states, that allows you guys to do what you want to do. And anyone else, hopefully you'll acquire a lot more of that property facing forty seven hundred and you'll be able to have a pretty constant. Vision of, uh, and, and product that, that looks good along there. That's, that's how I feel about it. I just, I just think it brings a lot of inconsistency, um, and especially to the general plan.
I see relating a lot to like our conversation with the river. Like they have buffers on the river, but we want to allow. Them to get close to the river in some aspects, but then have that buffer, you know, just so that it flows in the way that we want it to. So I would say that the, the outskirts are close to forty seven hundred could. Relate to that as well. There might be a place where you all see and you're like, no, this would be really good for. Like the images that you showed us with the trees and people walking their dogs or whatever, it might be good there, but it might not be good for the entire forty seven hundred stretch. So where it's applicable, so I, I guess I'm saying I agree that shouldn't enforce that. And if it comes naturally or helps the development, then. Hopefully they.
Then they'll design it either.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're hoping so. Yeah, but we're not going to have the residences right on board, like we have a buffer, there's a home. Right.
Right.
So what I did was, um. I added in a little bit of language to try and check the box for Commissioner Harvey. I will report back to the commissioners that you guys. Specifically said, you're, you're not super comfortable with the way that, um, that might play out, but let me tell you what this paragraph might say. Uh, which I tried to water it down as much as I could to still get him what he's asking for, while still giving these guys some design, um, discretion. So it says excluding. Any commercial building, including mixed use building with forty seven hundred west street frontage. And ground level uses devoted exclusively to commercial uses. So excluding that. Master developer agrees that any residential development adjacent to forty seven west street will require twenty five foot wide, uh, landscape buffer measured from the planning. Uh, or measured from the plan forty seven hundred west right away line. Uh, another little exception unless the planning director otherwise approves or reduces such requirement compliance with the general plan. Planning Division Director may, among other reasons, reduce such requirement if a separate community benefit is proposed with the applicable development, uh, complication. And knowing Rick and any other reasonable planning director, that's not going to happen unless he's got commissioner support to do it, so.
Rick, you good with, with that language?
I'd like to look at it a little bit more.
Yeah. I'll send it over to the.
That's also something that we can review during each phase, right? When we go to subdivision, like that would be, that will come up and then be. For me, it's more visual at that point. We're like, oh, you're going to put these here. It would be nice for a little bit of a buffer in that area or whatever. Like they not have it required right now, but we could ask for it when. Stop, white gums.
Yeah, and asking for it versus expecting it, um, those are going to be two different things, but, um, yeah, there's. No harm in having the planning commission look over development proposals, say, hey, we know we probably can't make you put in this buffer, but would you consider it and, um. Rising tides lift all boats. I think that, you know, that's something that they. They'd consider and if there's a good reason why not, they'll explain it and.
We're giving every single request that I've had so far, so they should work.
Um, the other thing that Commissioner Harvey wants is he, he thinks he wants, um.
He wants, or he thinks he.
It depends. Depends on whether or not we're recording, um, so he, I think he thinks.
I'll tell you the heat for that.
I think he wants, um, a certain amount of housing units set aside for senior housing. The challenge with that is that limits the applicant's ability to respond to market demand. Number one, and number two, um, putting a sharp number on what that number should be. What did he say? Did he say like a third? Or maybe he said ten percent, but even then it was. Yeah.
I think economically, that's a terrible idea. I. I mean, the people you want working there are living there and people working there for one. And so. We want senior housing, but I think it has to grow, um. Just, uh, organically.
I think that's exactly why.
Yeah.
The man will, yeah, but, but to put, I, I see no reason to put.
A number we don't.
I don't do that. No.
You need to put that on record.
I'm eighty years old.
It's a good representation of why his opinion.
All tiny hospital bed over there.
Unless the water.
But you know, in all seriousness, so, I mean, this is a beautiful development. And I think that there should be some homes over there that empty nesters. Didn't purchase and buy and enjoy that, but to put a number on it. I, I'm not too crazy about that.
I say let markets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of my things.
This is why I say I think Commissioner Harvey wants this thing because I know one of the other things that Commissioner Harvey sits on, uh, for his platform is, is market control. Um, so, so, uh, sometimes it's just a matter of helping him connect the dots, so I'll, I'll try and help with that. Um, let me read you a paragraph that we put in just in case he, he really wants to keep it this way. Um, it's, it's really kind of watered down language, but it does kind of tip the hat towards the concept. Um, so it's a provision called senior housing, uh, says the, the project is planned as a multi-generational community that supports a broad spectrum of housing needs. Including opportunities well suited for senior residents. The project's walkable layout, diverse housing types and proximity to parks, trails and neighborhood amenities are expected to naturally appeal to senior households. Master developers committed to fostering a community framework that welcomes residents at all life stages, including seniors. Through thoughtful design and a variety of residential options. So I haven't heard yet from Commissioner Harvey. I sent it up to him. I haven't heard if he is okay with it, but we'll find out. That's really it. They've taken a lot of what you guys have asked for and, and done here and just, they've taken it in stride and said, we're. We're, uh, it's heavy for them to think about because it's a big project and so they have been wanting to take their time. But they're very appreciative of all the effort that you guys have put into it. In fact, I think it was. I think it was Commissioner Harvey who said, you know, this is hard for us because we've only seen it for a few weeks and the planning commission has seen it for, uh, a year and so. Pretty sure it's pretty well fleshed out by them, but I just need someone to feed it to me one step at a time kind of thing, so. That's it. I'll send you over the revisions in a draft and. You guys can poke at it if you want to, or if you see something in there that you're really concerned about, let me know.
Do you think if we give it to you for a week, that's sufficient time for you guys to look at it and get comments back to this?
Um, I've got it in track change, so you don't have to read the whole thing again. Just go straight to the changes.
I can choose some changes.
Oh, then I will have more track changes for you. I, uh, by tomorrow. They all stood up at the same time and slowly sat back down. What?
Can you change this?
Just, just to kind of follow on with what Charlie said. And I mentioned this at our meeting last week, I went to the, all of the work sessions, then I plan on going to the public hearing for Westbridge next week and, and the one for Bennett Farms when it comes up. The commission is very complimentary and respectful of this group and, and, and these. Changes or amendments or, you know, I mean, amendments and changes are really too strong. These are pretty benign as far as I'm concerned, and I don't think it would take much. Commitment or not commitment, but coercing, and that's not really the word I want to use, but, but to, to get Commissioner Harvey satisfied with this, I think he just wants to feel good on it. And as does, I think, the whole commission for that matter, all three of them, but, but for the most part, I think that's what it is. They just want to make sure that we've looked at it. And those are some areas that he thought maybe could be, you know, changed or, or looked at harder. And, uh, I think that's really all this is, but, but I do believe that, that we have their breast and for the most part. And, um, and I think that that's really all this is, is just a, hey, you know, back me up on this or tell me where I'm wrong on this. Kind of a thing, so I don't think it's, it's really a showstopper in any direction on, on the progress of, uh, of, of taking it toward a hearing for them, so. Anyway.
Can you think of anything else I missed that the commissioners discussed?
Off the top of my head, I can't, I just, uh, it's pretty impressed that, that they do, you know, we're. They, they like what, they like our process, they like the way we process things, processes standardized. Legislatively, but I think that they, like I said, they trust what, they trust our, our logic and our common sense approach to this stuff and the fact that we live in the area. Um, I think helps them digest a better field, so.
Had a good, good conversation with the landowner across the river, um, the, uh, one of the, the Hanson's, it was a sister. Um, and, uh, she mentioned, you know, the family has some concerns with four hundred south curving up and going through their property on the other side. Um, and that they would really love to do some kind of nature preserve or sanctuary or park or something like that. So I just brainstormed with her a few different ideas. Um, what could happen on that side? I, I gave her the information for West Warren, Warren, West Warren Park District as well as Taylor West Weaver. See if either of those districts want to help them. Um, I think from a leaving a lasting legacy perspective. If, if, if she speaks for the rest of them, um, she said, you know, we're not really interested in selling it for development purposes. We would really like to see this permanently preserved. Um, in a way that the community can enjoy and not ruin. That's basically how she said it, so. If you guys can think of any ways to, to make that happen, I'm all ears or she's all ears. Um, I gave her some resources, sent it to the Department of Ag to look for some of the money that, um, Weaver County has for conservation easements and all that. Um. But the road, you know, it's probably still going to go somewhere close to the property if not through, but the rest of that property would be. Ideal, I think, as a, a community park or nature park or, or groom park, either or.
Well, I can answer that. What, what does that do to the? Thanks, Kieran. I'm just getting over that one, but go ahead and break down. So what, uh? What does that do to the location of the road?
Right now, the road, well, the general plan shows most of their property, most of that area in green park space. Um, but it also shows the road going through it, uh, just because there were, it was hard to find other places to put it. It also. We wanted to make sure that road went across the very top portion of Black Pine's M and T development, M and T zone development there, um. As another way out.
Right.
Um. And so if we didn't, if we didn't align it that way, we could go further north and connect it into three hundred north.
No.
Oops, sorry. I, I then, I then one fifty. I forgot you right there. I, I got. And, oh.
Well, I'm gonna take what you'd be talking about.
Um. It's substantial. I mean, they've got maybe hundred and fifty or so acres if you're looking at. All of the properties that Apple last name Hanson on it. I don't, I don't know how all of them. Work together, though.
Just hardly have big islands like that to keep continuity. I mean, it's nice to have preserves, but when they're in the middle, um, it's not.
Are they still on being their property or would they mind trading?
Yeah, the better location.
I asked that question, um, and I off, I put, put the offer out there that, you know, the park district, um, they're. Generating some funds that they may be willing to pick up some land. Um, I've made sure that she was clear that if it's just conservation easement, she's still going to be responsible for maintaining it or whoever they sell it to. And so she might as well get it in the hands of someone who's got the operations and, and, uh, maintenance resources.
Was it Karen that come seeing?
Karen, yes.
Okay, you know, just, just a comment on that. If that went through four hundred up there, that piece of Larry bought from Don Singleton. Could be the best place on that river because there's a big Oxbow up in there.
Yep.
It's a gorgeous place. I mean, it's needs a work. But that and, and actually most of that Hanson property has a. I think a pretty good setback from the water.
Yeah.
And so it would be a, I think, an amazing, some kind of a place to preserve.
Charlie, how quick are you to pull it up on that?
Soon. Watch how fast, time me.
Just, you're fast with the music. To me, it's just a, it's just making sure that we have access for a road through there. As far as the conservation goes, it's their property, you know? They want to put it in the conservation, great. As long as the conservation, as you've mentioned a moment ago, includes it being maintained.
Yes. And, uh, with water, we did, we talked about water as well. Man, yes.
Yes. I didn't want to slow you down. Ready?
Minute and a half.
Casey, so, yeah, just what I said, maybe if you think about. Like a big golf course or. It causes traffic congestion and issues for everyone surrounding big parcels like that. And so I love conservation, but a poorly placed conservation easement. Can be a pretty significant impact to the surrounding residents, um, as far as flow goes. And obviously it's, it's. It would be their decision whether they wanted to develop or not, but just something you might want to make. I know that they're probably doing that for their neighbors, but that might not be the most gracious gift.
I withhold my comments on all that part.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up Google Earth.
What do you think?
I'm gonna withhold my comments on all that.
We always get along.
Yeah. Generally speaking, it's this property.
Right there, yeah.
And we're, now the, the, right there, where he's. Park District, uh, West, Taylor West Weaver Park District is working with these guys to, to try and get something, open space park or something rather than that area. If you look at their most recent concept plan, it shows some green space there.
Next the river, then you're limited anyways for where you can touch the river. So that might not, that might be a good place for it.
So let, let. But it's a position where you can kind of show us where the road would go through, gentlemen.
Question, Charlie. Is that one Hanson, two Hancins, five Hancins, is it all that?
Or is it?
I don't know.
Hand better than, one on the hand better than two on the bush, as I said.
Well, I'm just saying, you're not going to get all five, dude.
Oh, I see what you're saying, um.
Ever. The same.
Yeah, no, um, she mentioned that. She's got to do some sales pitching. So, um, so.
It's a muted issue.
Until, yeah, until she does. So four hundred comes in here and then it kind of curves down in this to their development. Um, and then there's another one, uh, a road that kind of comes up through here and I believe it runs right across. There.
Okay.
Ish. Um. So to not cut through that property, I mean, we'd have to go even further north. Straight, straight to Wayne's house.
Was that north?
What, what is that north on that one?
That's three hundred.
Three hundred. Yeah.
Let me see if I can pull up the general map so you can see what that, how that looks in the context of the general plan map. Let me see if I can pull up the general map so you can see what that, how that looks in the context of the general plan map. With map, there we go. So it's this, it's this big complex here. So we were hoping for as much open space on both sides of the river there, to have a, a big park that the river runs through. That's kind of what we were looking at in the, in the general plan, but knowing the park district is on both sides, treated like two different parks kind of thing. These guys are gonna have some water and floodplain issues right here in this area here, so we'll probably still see a lot of open space in there. And then if the park district gets what they want, they'll have a little park in here, but that area on the other side, that's the. The biggest area. And I was aware when we were working on the general plan that. At least Larry Hanson wanted to never see this developed, I think he said, over, over my dead body. And I said, how old are you, Larry?
Well, his mother was a hundred, so.
But I did talk to him recently, to Larry recently, and let him know, look, this, this road here. We're gonna have a hard time putting it anywhere until we've got a landowner consent to do so. And so it's not worth even forcing the issue. And at that point, when he saw that. It's up, most of it's living for green space, he. That didn't have any more complaints. Which I thought he would because that. Kind of devalues the property, but. If his sister tells me right. Money isn't an issue here. Wanted to bring up to you guys' attention just to see if. Keep it in your mind, think of ways that maybe. The county or any other entity can help the Hanson's fill hole and. Take a little land off their hand. But put it into some kind of a conservation or public park or. Something that benefits the public and leaves a legacy for them, Hanson Memorial Park or something.
They don't want the road to go through like this.
They would rather not have the road go through, yep, but it's always something we can work with them on, I'm sure. Just a matter of negotiation.
And would it be okay just donate it to? The county for open space?
That's one option. I don't, I don't know the county would have the. Wherewithal to take care of it, though. I think we'd wanna, yeah. Yes, and I, I really tried to pitch that one out there. It's probably the best idea. Going through the Department of Ag and getting money for conservation easements, you still have to have someone operate and maintain the land, so. She's gonna go do a little bit of research herself and talk to the brothers and. I don't know if there's sisters in there too, but talk to the family and figure it out.
There's another sister, well. The, the oldest sister in that family died, but they're, they're on now. So I don't know, I, I don't wanna speculate. Except the fact is, as Larry's always said, that piece he bought from Singleton's. That he wanted to basically say the way it has been forever. And that oxbow, I mean, if that was cleaned up and had the bridge across that river, which he probably wouldn't want. For footbridge. Would be a good spot.
Well, we'll keep our eyes out for opportunities and. We'll continue to work with Black Pine on the east side, see what we can flesh out. Cool.
Is that everything you want to go? Any other questions for Charlie or, or Jeff or Geneva or Daniel while, while we got him here? Alright, easy enough. So you just want a response back from us with, you'll put how long, when you want it back by on your email. And you'll refer to everything you want us to look at and we can look at anything on that we want, okay? Perfect enough.
I'm standing, I'll have that in your inbox in the morning after I've looked at Liam's changes.
Perfect. Alright, we don't have to take any action on this one, so. We're good, alright. Uh, let's see, you guys have any public comments for items not on the agenda? Okay. Planting commissioners, any comments or? Remarks? Okay, Director Charlie? You've been promoted again.
Thanks. Actually, I don't wanna be promoted. I think I might get more than Rick does with overtime, so. In my position. Uh, no, I don't think we have anything specific.
Mr. Keel? Alright, I'll take a motion. All in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Wow, thanks, everybody.